Welcome everybody to the public hearing for the zoning board of appeals Thursday, May 26, 2022. I motion that we open the hearing. Can I have a second? And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So I believe we have an adjournment request with respect to the first two pending cases, case number 3133, Michael and Annie Falk, and case number 3134, 40 Meadow Lane, Michael and Annie Falk. And I believe the request is to adjourn until June 14th, but there may be an additional request to adjourn further. But for right now, can I have a motion to, I'll motion to accept the request for adjournment of case number 3133 and case number 3134 until June 14th as requested by the applicant? Can I have a second?
Second.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. So that's unanimous. We'll adjourn those two cases, 3133 and 3134, until June 14th. And if the applicant seeks to request an additional adjournment, that would be fine as well. I believe we have case number 3130, where 40 Meadow Lane already requested to adjourn to July 12th, and we accepted that. So I don't believe, Jeff, we need any further action on that, on 200 Lane?
We do not adjourn.
And as of now, 370 Great Plains Lane is adjourned to June 14th. So we don't have to take any further action now, but we understand that the applicant may need additional time, which would be fine. So we'll entertain an additional adjournment whenever the applicant submits that. I believe our first case ready for a continued hearing is case number 3131, Smithtown Partners, 40 Meadow Lane. Kat is the applicant or Jolie is the applicant here?
Yes. I'll promote them. Okay. Mr. Sandlinsky, you're in.
Good evening. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Yes, loud and clear.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Michael Sandlinsky for the applicants, Smithtown Partners. I'm joined by Josh Rogenswag, the architect for the project. We will actually be briefed. I know that this board has a brief agenda with all the Germans tonight. We would just request the record to be closed, and we request a decision.
Do any board members have any questions or comments? Alex, we had hoped perhaps that the chief building inspector could join us, but in lieu of Tian joining us, could you?
He's, he's in the, yeah. He is.
That'd be wonderful. Can we promote Tian? Because I do
Sure.
have some questions for Tian, and perhaps he can.
Tian, you're being promoted to panelist. Tian. Chair, he didn't have his hand up.
Hello?
Oh, here we go. Okay.
Who are you?
Okay, that's good.
I can't see you, though.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask why the chief building inspector is being called, or who requested his presence?
I would have requested his presence among other board members who are interested in his inquiries and the responses provided by the applicant with respect to his inquiries.
His inquiries? I've received no inquiries from him.
Well, maybe that's why we're promoting Tian. Could you, by the way, just so we don't have kind of two people appearing, Michael, do you mind stepping back and letting us speak with the chief building?
That's fine. Just note my objection to him appearing.
I'm not quite sure why Mr. Sandlinsky is objecting to a building inspector of the Incorporated Village speaking at a hearing. I would just like to note that I think
That because I was giving, I was giving, I was giving no
And I'd also like the opportunity to finish a statement, sir. I see there's nothing improper about a building inspector speaking out at a board hearing.
I just wanted to know how it came about because nothing was discussed, nothing was discussed in an open meeting about it. I was not made aware of his appearance, and I'm just wondering how it came about. That's all. But just note my objection, and I'll step out of the room.
Okay.
I can be removed from the room, however it works.
I'll bring you.
Thanks for joining us, Tian, really. I believe some board members had some questions to to determine exactly what was involved in the final product, the final construction over 40 Meadow Lane, because we had some questions as to discrepancies between the proposed plans and perhaps how the project had been built out, and how those how those plans and how the final construction project related to the height of the building, the gross floor area, et cetera, this having to do with the third floor, whether it's a third floor or a half story. So I believe you were involved in perhaps, you know, inquiring with the architect to find out a little bit more. And if you could just fill us in on your conversations with the architect, and what you can provide to us as far as additional information with respect to gross floor area, the height of the building, the third floor, and whether it's a true half story. Because our concern, the board's concern is the possibility that additional variances, you know, could be required here. And we've been trying to obtain from the applicant information with respect to the construction of this house to determine whether or not there might be additional variances required with respect to the height of the building or the gross floor area of the building. And I believe you had some conversations with the architect and perhaps with legal counsel that shed some light on this.
You're absolutely correct. Luke Ferrin did bring this to my attention with respect to the half story. And I actually had some concerns about that half story as well. And I did pose a question to the architect on record, requesting additional details as to how that half story does meet that section of the code itself. And, you know, he had not responded. And I was curious as to why. And I called Mike, honestly. And what happened there was that he told me not, he told me that he told his architect to not respond to me for additional details as to the half story itself. So pretty much Alex and I have been trying to parse out that half story itself and determine whether or not it does meet that code. Luke, as well, he's also been curious about that half story as well as to whether or not it meets that definition.
Well, and if it doesn't meet the definition of a half story, what would be the effect?
Well, it would be an additional variance that would be required. You know, the half story itself does have to come down to a knee wall. It's a little unusual in this case because of the fact that it has four gables. That's okay, and that's all well and good if the gables are cut short of the perimeter walls themselves. The half story definition itself is a little vague in a sense that how you would implement it. Most houses that have a half story just have two end gables. And, you know, it's not a really concern about that. But given this unusual building itself, it does beg the question whether or not it's pushing some extremes and that definition of that half story.
So what would be the additional variance that would be required if it doesn't qualify as a half story?
It would be, it would be an exception from that half story code. It's a definition in the code itself. So yeah, it would be an additional variance that would be required from that, if necessary.
You know, I guess what I'm asking is if it's not a half story, it's a full third story?
That's, you're correct about that. That's correct. And that is prohibited by code itself, where it just says that, you know, residential structure is limited to a two and a half story construction type.
And would there, in addition, be a building code violation if it was not a half story? In other words, the sprinkler requirement?
Well, I mean, at this point, that building itself does have a CVO. I was never in that particular structure. And I'm certain that when it was signed off on, you know, the prior building inspectors did all the, they made sure that this particular building was up to the standards at the time. So I'm not going to, you know, necessarily say that it was a violation if there's already CVO on file. You know, going forward, though, that's where the new additions would have to meet with that, with the code itself.
Right. And you haven't been in the house since the CVO was issued?
I've never been in that. I've never been in that particular dwelling.
Tian, could you just, so going forward, the sentence before the last one, what is that? So they're asking to add on, on the purported two and a half story. Is that correct?
They are asking for an addition to the half story. That's correct.
Right. So that's where we want to know if that's where our inquiries go in terms of is it or is it not? What is it? I guess it's what we want to know.
That's right.
Okay. So we don't know, you're saying, how could that be determined other than inspection?
Well, other architects have provided more detailed, more detailed drawings of that half story itself. They're not as, you know, this particular half story is expansive. So it does kind of push some limits there. It's, you kind of have to, the architect itself has to bear out and show that it meets that definition of a half story where it comes to a knee wall. And, you know, it seems like, again, it's pushing some limits there with respect to that half story with that addition shown. You know, that's where the architect would have to assist us in showing that it meets that section or definition of a half story. That's what I was asking for. And that's where, you know, I ran into a roadblock.
So you're at an impasse? Is that what you're saying?
Well, I asked for additional assistance from the architect on record. And like I said, yes, you're correct. It's an impasse. I mean, I, you know, if it does, then show us. That's that was my premise when I contacted the architect as well as the attorney.
So just, doesn't that leave us at an impasse? Or am I nuts?
Well, yeah, because we're missing some details as to how this particular half story meets that definition. And it's, when you look at it, that's, it's hard to kind of visualize because of the fact that it has four gables and it's shaped like a plus symbol. You know, when you look at it, it looks like a full third story. And, you know, and the drawings themselves are not necessarily enough to ascertain how if it does meet that particular definition of a half story.
And if it doesn't meet the definition of a half story, doesn't it also affect the gross floor area? Wouldn't more gross floor area be included then?
Well, that's where they had the half story, you know, the exemption where it says a third of the floor, overall floor is exempt, the larger the third floor, you know, the greater the exemption. So, you know, if you build it bigger, then you create a larger exemption. But you still have to meet that half story definition where it's not a full, you know, you don't have a full third floor wall height on the perimeter edges of the building itself. And, you know, obviously, the code was looking to avoid that, you know, they don't want full wall height third stories. That's why they have a half story. And when it says the roof, the roof itself has to slope down towards a lower wall at the perimeters. And that's what I was hoping to get a better understanding of with this particular building and how those additions would relate to that, whether or not they would come down or are they exceeding that slope of the roof that's required to meet the definition of a half story. If they're beyond that, then it's arguable that, yes, this would be considered just a full third story at that point.
And so it wouldn't qualify for any of the exemptions in terms of the?
Yeah. I mean, at that point, you're talking like, you know, and again, this is an unusual structure in a sense that it's rather large, it's rather a big square, and you're just trying to fill in the middle, you know. And how far can you take that middle outward to the perimeter without exceeding that half story definition? You know, the code itself, I don't think they were, when they wrote it, they didn't think of a building like this, you know, where you're limited to maybe two gable ends. This has four gable ends, and it's pushing some extreme limits there.
I have a question. Tian, how common is it that you would reach out to an architect of record and not receive a reply to an inquiry like?
It's not, it's not commented at all. You know, all the architects that we, they're always very, you know, they want their projects to continue. And it's not, it's very uncommon that they're unresponsive. So I was curious about that. But I can't answer for that.
Of course.
I certainly tried to get an answer, and I was unable to.
Out of, out of 25 inquiries to an architect, how many would not be responded to?
Honestly, zero. Most architects, surveyors, whomever the building department calls, they're usually very responsive in trying to get us the information that we asked for. So it was very unusual to hear that response. I can't answer for why they did that, obviously, but, you know.
I'm just curious. I'm trying to put a framework around how common this happens, how often, if ever, it happens.
Sure, understood.
The answer.
Hey, Tian, this board notwithstanding, having not received answers to your questions or being told directly that they're not giving them to you, how inclined would you be to issue a building permit?
Not until I feel satisfied that those, you know, that my questions are answered, you know. And it's unusual, the way they configured this, and, you know, as to whether or not it does meet that definition. Maybe that definition needs to be revisited in terms of just a redefining of what they mean with the half story, you know, because of the fact that this is such a sprawling dwelling, you know, in the sense that if you did truly create two gable ends, maybe that half story would be extremely large. I mean, you know, that's where you kind of have to have the architect kind of show that and bear that out. That's what I was asking for, and I didn't get my answer.
And is there other construction? Do you know that, is any construction going on on those ends?
On this particular dwelling?
Now, yeah.
There shouldn't be.
Well, I know, I'm asking.
I know.
I'm just curious.
No, not in this dwelling.
Okay.
Yeah.
Luke, do you want to discuss the initial questions that you had, or what triggered your curiosity and your inquiries with respect to the half story?
Yeah, absolutely. I'm going to share my screen. Well, it always seemed a little weird to me, going back to our first hearing on this, that this drawing, A301, the proposed building section, didn't show the other area over here. And I had raised that issue in the first hearing, and the architect said, yes, we know that drawing is incorrect, but we're going to fix it. And I don't think we've seen a corrected drawing yet. But if you if you really start to think about this flat-roofed structure over here being mirrored over here, it really starts to feel like just a big flat roof up here. And it just got me thinking about the, you know, there was a lot of talk about it being a half story and these being dormers. And in my experience, you know, the master suite would not ordinarily be put in a half story, right? So we start to look at it a little bit. When you look at these gable ends beyond, right? This is the main ridge, runs east to west, parallel to the shoreline and Meadow Lane. And we kind of see that, like, it's got a full wall height here and a full wall height here. And so, you know, while we can agree that right now, this master closet, to me, definitely meets the definition of a half story, maybe that this ridge doesn't, right? And so we go to their original permit drawings. We kind of see, let's look at that ridge, right? And we see that it is an eight-foot ceiling height, and that we don't have any low knee wall over here, because any sort of knee wall here would block the sliders in the master bedroom. Sort of say, okay, this is the master sitting room. This looks like a full story to me. We can go to some other drawings. Going the wrong way. Master bedroom. Again, we don't see this coming down to form any sort of low knee walls that would block the sliders to the master bathroom, and it would block the sliders to the master sitting room. So we have another one of these wings on the cross that is definitely a full height structure. I can infer, given the location of this wind, this sliding door here, that the master bathroom also is a full height. And then we have the cross in the middle. You can see that drawn. Where can we see that drawn? It's a long section. And in here, we see this wall height, this eight-foot wall height continues in the whole stair hall. So go back and we look at top floor. We can kind of start to say that this is a full height. This is a full height. This is a full height. And this is a full height. Present configuration, we've got this as a half story. But knowing now what we know about this being a flat roof, this plate height is at 76. This plate height is also. And so now, even this becomes a full height story. So in its existing configuration, I think it's pretty clear that this floor doesn't meet the definition of half story now, and definitely not considering what they are proposing. Given the fact that, you know, the master bedroom alone is 320 square feet, we can sort of infer that 640, 980, you know, it affects the GFA calculation. And I put this in an email to Tian. He passed those questions on to the architect, and here we are. You know, my thing all along, I just want to talk about this in terms that are the most accurate. And I don't think calling it a half story is really accurate. I don't think labeling here and here as dormers is really accurate. And we need to have good faith conversations about this. That's where I'm coming from on it.
Tian, apart from it perhaps not qualifying as a half story, does it also create the possibility that it's actually a flat-roofed building, in which case it's too tall as a flat roof building? Because, and again, I'll have you explain to us. But I believe if it's a flat roof building, it needs to be lower than a house that is designed with a gable. So if essentially this is a flat roof building, should the entire building be lower?
Tian, you're muted.
Thank you. Yes, you're correct, Mark. If it's truly a flat roof building, then yes, it certainly would be much lower than it is now. Or need to be, for any additions.
Do any other board members have any questions?
Well, has it been answered? From my perspective, it looks like it is, it has made it that the addition would make it more of a flat roof than it already is. And as far as I could tell, I already thought it was, which means it has theoretically, of course, it's already built, be eight feet lower. Is that correct? A certain percentage of the roof, I don't know what it is, but let's say 60% is flat, then it's got to be eight feet lower. Yes?
Yes, that's correct. So you, you know, if you're asking for those two additions beyond that, then yes, you're asking for additional variances beyond a flat, if it is truly a flat roof building.
If you're not asking for anything, it just remains the way it is? There's nothing that can be done, right? It's built.
It's built, it's CVO'd, you know. So, I mean, it's not, there's plenty of, you would almost, at this point, call it a pre-existing, non-conforming dwelling at this point.
Badly.
Tian, really, we greatly appreciate you attending. I think there's some reasonable questions that were asked, but the applicant did not provide responses.
I'd like to thank Tian. Thank you very much. You've been very helpful to me.
You're welcome.
Yeah, absolutely, Tian. Very responsive. Really appreciate it. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I think we need more, I think we need more time with you, Tian, on this case and others. It's very helpful.
Sure, understood.
Thank you. Kat, you can?
It's just Jolie. I'll take him out. Thank you.
Really, sorry.
No worries.
So we were asked to close it.
Well, we might want, let the applicant speak. But we can vote to close it, but I don't. We can give Mr. Sandlinsky an opportunity to speak if he would like to. Jolie, does he want to?
Mr. Sandlinsky? Oh, yes, he does.
Could I just say, we're going, I'm going to need some information from our attorney, but not now.
Certainly. I think, I think right now, we're just considering the applicant's request to close the hearing for all purposes and reach a decision. We can always talk with Jeff about any questions we have after the closing of the hearing, but.
Mr. Sandlinsky, you're in.
Hi, can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, at this time, I would ask that member Ferrin recuse himself in this matter. He's obviously engaged in ex parte communications outside of the public hearing, and therefore he should not be sitting any further on this application. I'd ask that he recuse himself at this time.
Just to be clear, as far as I understand it, Mr. Ferrin's representation was that he asked the building inspector of the village to obtain information. I'm not aware that he communicated with you, Mr. Sandlinsky, or that he communicated with the applicant or with the architect.
No, he communicated, he communicated with the building inspector. He said he had discussions at length with the building inspector.
And he asked the building inspector to obtain information.
Right. And those requests have come through my office as the applicant, if he wants information for my hearing on my application.
So then you're saying
The reason why we haven't provided information is that information is not germane to the variances that we've requested. The reason why we haven't provided information is that information is not germane to the variances that we've requested and then are before the board.
Just to be, Mr. Sandlinsky, that.
I've made a, Mr. Blinkoff, I've made a request and I would ask, it's Mr. Farron's responsibility to either, you know, recuse himself or not. And that's his personal decision, but I'm making that request.
Mr. Sandlinsky, you've made your request. I assume the board will take it under advisement of Mr. Farron. And I can have a discussion as to the legality of that. And your request is noted for the record.
Thank you. And then at this time, at this time, I would just say that the reason why we did not respond is because none of those, none of the information that was requested is germane to the application as it sits before the board for the four variances that are requested. And we, at this time, we would ask the board to close the, close the hearing.
Okay, so I'll motion that we we close this hearing for all purposes.
Don't move.
So let me, let me do it more formally. I'll motion that we close case number 3131, Smithdown Partners, 40 Meadow Lane. For all purposes, can I have a second?
Second.
And all in favor of closing case number 3131 for all purposes?
Hi.
Bye.
Bye.
Thank you very much. So with respect to new cases, case number 3136, 1160 Meadow Lane. A motion to accept the applicant's request for an adjournment to June 23rd. Can I have a second?
Second.
And all in favor of accepting the applicant's request for adjournment in case number 3136 to June 23rd? Say aye.
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 I will also motion with respect to case number 3137, 85 Hildreth Street, that we accept the applicant's request for adjournment to June 23rd. Can I have a second?
Second. Now at 11, at 6:23.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
So we move on to the next new case where I believe we'll be hearing for the first time, case number 3138, Fitzpatrick as applicant 230 Elm Street. Jolie, is the, is the, is the applicant here?
Yeah, I believe so. If you're wanting to be heard for this application, please raise your hand. I'm assuming it's, okay. Is this, is Jay Fitzpatrick the one who's going to be speaking on this application? Do we know?
I believe Mr. Boravina is his attorney.
Okay, because there are several hands up, so I don't know who is wanting to speak.
I believe Mr. Hamburger represents the property owner.
Okay. And should he be brought in as well?
No, he's not the applicant.
Okay. Pardon. Mr. Boravina, you're in. You could please unmute and start your camera.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Mr., may I speak?
Yes.
Yes, of course.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, my name is Anton Boravina, attorney in Melville. I represent Jay Fitzpatrick, Charlie Dubrowolski, and Mike Zinder, who, who will be speaking after me in connection with this application. And the purpose of the application is to appeal from the determination of the building inspector when he issued a building permit in connection with renovations to be made to 230 Elm Street, commonly known as Polish Hall. And Polish Hall, as you know, is located in the VB district. At the time, the zoning code was adopted in 1973. A catering, a commercial catering use or a business was a prohibited use. I'll get, I'll discuss later in my presentation the, the, the history of the uses, but with the understanding that as of 1973, the catering was a prohibited use. And no amendment since that time has not made it a, a, a permitted use. Now, before I do talk about the, the application and to set aside the, the permit and to review at the certificate of occupancy that was issued earlier. I think it's important to just give a brief discussion about the timeliness of the application, because I know in the, the owner has made certain objections regarding timeliness. If I, if, and but this is all summarized in the memo in my application that I gave many, several weeks ago to the board and to the clerk. Well, on December 30th, 19, 2020, rather, Elegant Affairs made an application to make interior renovations. Now, at the time, the application was made, the village code stated quite clearly that no permit, a building permit can be issued unless it has been, unless it has been approved by the planning board. Rather, I must tell you, an anomaly that was strange, but that's how the building code read. As a result of this, however, TN, our, our building inspector, issued a stop-work order in March, directing Elegant Affairs to stop work until, unless and until it has gone to the planning board for approval in accordance with the village code as it existed then, 116 hyphen 38A. Well, on March, as a result, we could do nothing until obviously the building permit was finally issued and finally determined by the planning board. Well, on March 29th, 2022, the board of trustees rescind amended the code by deleting the requirement that building permits had to have review and approval by the building permit. For all practical purposes, then, the time to do something with respect to the building permit that was issued would have, would have started at that point, because prior to that time, it would have been premature until such time as the building, there's been an exhaustion of remedies associated with going to the planning board. And then, of course, we now go to the Board of Zoning Appeals, and that's where we're here today. And this, the application was made within the time prescribed for making an appeal to the board, to the Board of Zoning Appeals. Now, what about the application? The application is for interior, is, was initially for interior and exterior renovation of Polish Hall. It's, there is no question, it's undisputed, that the purpose, the intended use of these renovations was to, was to infernores of a commercial catering establishment, a business, a, a commercial business for catering. There's no doubt about that. At the time, Representative Elegant Affairs spoke before the Architecture Review Board. It's, it, he plainly stated that if, that he would like to be able to have Elegant Affairs run as a business of, for example, weddings at 365 days a year. By the way, the Polish-American political committee, the owners of the Polish Hall, in a letter to its shareholders on September 15th, 2020, stated to shareholders, welcomed Elegant Affairs and stating that it's, that we are now going to enter into a long-term lease with Elegant Affairs so that it can operate a cafeteria business, and that, that being Elegant Affairs intended use. If you go to Elegant Affairs webpage, its webpage, Elegant Affairs is known widely throughout the state of New York as being in the catering business establishment. It's, 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 that's, that's its primary. That's its primary business. So, so that was the purpose of the, the building permit then was issued in furtherance of that. And for reasons I'll say a little bit later in my presentation, the issuance of that building permit for that, for that intended purpose, frankly, was unlawful. And I asked that the Board of Zoning Appeals, this board, rescind the building permit. Now, I think it's appropriate that, just if I may, to, to, to discuss with the board, what was the pre-exist, what was the use, what are the allowed uses for 230 Elm Street, again, Polish Hall? Well, Polish Hall began to be used, was, was owned and started, became operational as a social club for Polish Americans and their families and guests as of 1928. The, and this is before the code was adopted in 1973. Now, as a social club, there's no question, we don't dispute this, that as a social club between 1920 and frankly, to the year 2003, but let's go to 1973, the Polish club was used for, its principal use was always as a social club. It did have, no doubt, parties for its members and guests. It had wedding receptions for its members and guests. It had charity events at, you know, at their, at, at, there. Nothing of a commercial use whatsoever. The building permits, these are all documents, by the way, Mr. Chairman, that I have given to the board for its consideration and review. The building permits for 1933, I'm sorry, 1934, 1963 and 1966, all this before the code was adopted, described the use of Polish Hall as a social club. That was its use. It conducted no business. The, after the code was adopted in 1987, Dave Gilmarten, my former county attorney, now then village attorney, regarded and said to, to the owner and to the, and to the village frankly, as well as to the residents, the Polish Hall was really, was, was, it just had, has been, when was a clubhouse. Now, fortunately, if there's any doubt about this, just this last night, and I believe I received it very early this morning, the owner for, the owner actually submitted a couple, a, a timeline showing dates, showing events since 19, since 1930, I believe, up until the present time. I had occasion to look at it. By the way, you'll have, you'll, you'll hear more about this from Charlie Dubrowolski and as well as Jay, Jay Fitzpatrick and, and Mike Zinder on this. But when you take a look at the, when you take a look at the, at the recorded events that, that the owner gave along these lines, there's not a single reference to a commercial business use at any time prior to 19, prior to 2003. For example, in between 1959 to 1960, there were, there were, frankly, there were 42 events for that 10-year period, approximately four a year. Not one was a, for a, a business use, a commercial business use. In 19, and by the way, I'm referring to the compilation that was actually given by the owner. You got it today. It's in the, so you'll be able to look at it and verify what I'm saying yourself when, when you have, when, when as members of the board and you deliberate upon the request that's being made today in this appeal. In 1970 to 1978, there were 35 events, or approximately 3.5 a year, a year, a year. None was a commercial use. From 1981 to 1990, there were 19, there were 19 events. Same thing, no business use. Frankly, in the year two, in the year from 2010 to 2013, for example, there were 13 uses, 13 events, I should say, to be accurate. The last wedding reception, according to the compilation, the last wedding reception, which by the way, was by, was being sponsored by members. It was members' families. That was the purpose of the wedding reception that took place on May 20th, 20, 2000. So, so that was the last event. And it's now 13 years past. When, according to the compilation, no wedding receptions took place. Let's bear in mind that the principal of Elegant Affairs, James Cartiatus, told the Architecture Review Board several months ago that if it was up to him, that he would like, that Elegant Affairs would have wedding receptions 365 days a year. So please, please bear that in mind now. What about this? What, what do we, what, what do we do with respect to the, to the building permit that was issued? Well, the, the village code addresses this as this case law, and it's this, this all mentioned in my, in my memo. The village code, section 116 hyphen 37A to B says, with respect to building permits, no building permit shall be issued for the erection, construction, reconstruction, structural alteration, restoration, repair, or, or moving of any building or structure apart thereof, unless the plans and intended use, that's the critical language, and intended use indicate that such whole building or structure is designed and intended to conform in all respects to the provisions of this chapter and, and the Board of Architecture Review. Well, what, well, let's, what was it? What was the use? What, what does the code say? Well, to the extent that a, a, as of 1973, the, a, the use was as a social club, even though the social club today is a prohibited use in a village business district. Nevertheless, it's a pre-existing, non-conforming use. Frankly, to the extent that there were other events taking place, including, by the way, events in which food was being served, I would argue and say that that was an incidental use as a non-business, non-commercial use intended to furtherance the social interests of the members of the, of the Polish Americans and their guests. That was the kind of use that was in place as of 1973, as of 1973. So, so to the extent that a building permit was, was what, what was, was given, it's to be examined as to what was his intended use. And the intended use in this case is to promote and to foster use of Polish Hall as a commercial catering establishment, which is, which is unprecedented. By the way, if I may, in, in, in 2003, I described how the uses were taking place from 1928 up until approximately 2003. Well, what happened in 2003? Well, in 2003, the owners began to lease the premises, first to a hotel operator, and then ultimately from 2009 up until approximately 2019, to a fellow by the name of Tim Burke, who for that period of time used the premises, I would argue unlawfully, but used the premises as a disco club, nightclub house, I'm sorry, a disco operation. And as an entertainment facility for commercial purposes. That's what it was being used from 2000, frankly, from 2003, I might add, all the way up to now. To the extent that there was a social club use, at best, it occurred prior to 2003. I'm sorry, prior to 2009, I might add. But, but, but you know, we're not here to contest the use of Polish Hall for social club purposes. What we, this appeal is predicated on the proposition that the use of Polish Hall for a commercial establishment, a catering use, be it a principal use, by the way, or an incidental use, it doesn't matter how you describe it, was nevertheless unlawful, and therefore the building permit that was issued should not have been issued. It's in violation of 11637 to B. By the way, 11637C also says, even with respect to issuances of certificates certificates of occupancy, that no certificate of occupancy shall be issued for any building, et cetera. Accepting conformance with the, that the intended use is in conformity with, with, with the chapter. By the way, subdivision E says, if the building inspector should mistakenly issue a building permit, which violates the provisions of this chapter, that building permit shall be invalid. By the way, there's also case law, a substantial body of case law that says that the issuance of building permits, the, which, which, which were unlawfully issued are null and void. Now, why was this particular building permit, and frankly, the CFO issued by the building inspector null and void? Because it purports, I think, and this is why we're here too, by the way, to seek the board's guidance on this and their interpretation as this as well. We contend that the building permit was issued, if it to the, it created by administrative fiat a unlawful use out of, a use that is made a, a commercial catering use all of a sudden becomes a principal use, let alone an incidental use. And we say, we contend that the building inspector, in all due respect to him, lacked the authority to have done that. The same thing is with respect to the certificate of occupancy, to the extent the CFO was issued. It's, and it that allowed uses of a bowling alley, for example, a bar, even catering. It was, it was supposed to have been, and we contend was intended to be, a recognition of bowling alley, bar, a meeting hall, and, and catering as an incidental use. The building inspector did not have the authority, we respectively submit, to, to change the use. The only way that use can be changed, as this board well knows, it knows, is either The only way that use can be changed, as this board well knows, it knows, is either by the Board of Trustees by amending the zoning code or, by the way, at the ZBA with the, under, under certain circumstances, which are not present, and it hasn't been done here. It was, it was certainly not done in, when the certificate of occupancy was issued, nor was it undertaken when the building permit was issued. And so therefore, those two instruments, that is, the building permit was unlawfully issued and should therefore be rescinded. The building inspector acted ultra vires by giving, by issuing the building permit. And also the certificate of occupancy, to the extent it purports to allow a, a catering use, which, again, if it was an incidental use, and that's what we, that's how we interpret it, by the way, to the extent it's an incidental use catering, then there is, there is, we don't contest that prior to the time the zoning code was adopted, that the premises occasionally was used for, for a catering, but never used for a commercial catering establishment. And simply, we contend, simply because the, a pre-existing use allowed an intermittent use, what, and all of a sudden, that intermittent use suddenly becomes a permanent use. That's not what the, that's not what the concept of pre-existing non-conforming use really is, is, is intended to encompass. Under, under that theory, a residential home prior to nineteen seventy-three that occasionally was used for agricultural purposes in the backyard, having a garden in which on occasion there would be the sale of tomatoes, or the giving of tomatoes to next-door neighbors. It, it would, it begs, it begs logic to conclude therefore that because of this intermittent use, non-commercial use for the growing of vegetables, all of a sudden, that parcel of property now has an agricultural use, pre-existing agricultural use as of right. So, and in nineteen seventy-three, I asked the board to take a look at what happened in nineteen seventy-three. In nineteen seventy-three, there was no, and prior to that time, there was not a commercial use of elegant, of, of, of Polish Hall. And that remained the case until two thousand and three, when the hotel took over. Even then, it, where there was no catering that was being done. And in two thousand and nine, frankly, was taken over by Tim Burke as a, for purposes of, of having a disco club, as it were. So I therefore request that the, that the, that the board, this board, vacate and set aside the issues of the building permit and, and, and regard the issuance of the certificate of occupancy that was previously issued as being nothing more than the allowance of, of, of the kinds of uses that were contemplated as of nineteen, prior to nineteen seventy-three. What was that? A social club as its principal use with incidental uses, the parties, birthday celebrations, baptisms, confirmations, wedding receptions, to the extent that they were held by, for the benefit of members and guests. We don't have any problems with that. What we have a problem with is the commercial use of the premises. I appreciate the board listening to my presentation. I would now like to introduce, I have with me the applicant, the applicants, I should say, Charlie Dubrovolski, Jay Fitzpatrick and Mike Zinder. You know, I would ask if Charlie, if you are available, I would ask the, the board with the board's permission, if Charlie Dubrovolski could speak. By the way, he is a, not only a resident, all three of, by the way, are residents, neighbors living along Elm Street. But Charlie himself was a, and is, a member of the Polish American Club and was from a, when he was a kid, he worked there, when his father was also a member, so he has quite an extensive knowledge regarding how Elegant, excuse me, how Polish Hall was being used historically and would be able to speak about that. And then, then to be followed by Jay Fitzpatrick and then Mike Zinder. So with the board's permission, I ask that Charlie Dubrovolski speak in support of the application.
Chair, would you, would you like him?
Yeah, Jolly, could you, could you let Charlie in, but, but exit council?
Sure. We take counsel out first. Mr. Dubrovolski, you're in. If you could turn on your camera and unmute, please. Mr. Dubrovolski. Okay, you're unmuted. You were unmuted. Now, if you could just unmute, there you go. And can you start your camera?
Just start camera.
Turn it on.
That's it. Okay. Go ahead.
Yeah, you're ready. You're in.
I'm ready.
You're in, yes.
Oh, thank you. Hello, Chairman and Board. I'm Charles Dubrovolski. I live across the street from two thirty Elm my whole life. My father and I were both members of the Polish Hall. My father worked at the Hall as a bartender, and I also worked at the bowling alley. The Polish Hall was operated as a social club for members. The bar and bowling alley were open seven days a week. The main floor was used as a gathering area and for meetings. The Polish Hall never advertised as a catering hall. On occasion, members and their families or friends would have events on the main floor. Events were held by members and friends of which were organized by members of the club. Their events were not held every day or every weekend. In two thousand and three, the upstairs was rented out to the Hampton Hall. They had a few events. In two thousand and ten, the Polish Hall removed the members from the bar. A new renter came in. Both the upstairs and downstairs were used as the nightclubs, live music, DJ parties and bands, but it was never used for catering. I was there. It never happened. I would have known if, about it. The Polish Hall was never commercially used as a catering hall. It was a bar and bowling alley used as a social club for members and friends of the Polish American community. I read the compilation list of events held at the Polish Hall, charity weddings, dances. There was nothing commercial about these events. They were all social club type events. Thank you.
Thank you. Jolly, does, does Jay want to join us and?
Yeah, let me go ahead and.
Thank you.
Mr. Fitzpatrick, if you could unmute and turn on your camera.
Okay.
We can hear you.
Okay, my name's Jay Fitzpatrick. My name's Jay Fitzpatrick, and I live at two forty-three Elm Street, across the street from the Polish Hall. And my house was built in eighteen ninety-five. I bought it from the Golinski family, and they told me, I asked them what the building was across the street, and they told me it was the a private Polish club, and I, I kind of believed them. Anyway, I bought the house, I renovated. The Golinski family came for a big birthday party here, and they were very impressed with what I did with the house. The ninety-three-year-old little girl who grew up in this house saw that I kept it exactly the way it was, saw her bedroom. She looked out the window, she looked at the Polish club, and she said that she has such fond memories of being at the Polish club as a little girl with all of her friends and parties. And by that time, I knew what was really going on over there, and I certainly wasn't going to bust her bubble, so I I thanked them. She had a great party here and left, and then in two thousand and three, and I'm getting this from two thousand and three, from two thousand and ten, I'm getting this information from old timers who used to live here, but then have moved away, and I'm also getting this information from the Southampton Press. Hampton Hall rented the upper level. The Polish club kept the lower level for their bar and the bowling alley because it was very, very lucrative. But on the upper level, Hampton Hall was supposed to come in doing some sort of events, but what they ended up doing is they ended up partying with third-party people like HBO, and they became super events. It is so big and with so many sponsors and doing something that wasn't jiving with the certificate of occupancy because the Southampton, the Village Police Department came and stopped it and stopped future events like that. And because they, they stopped future events like that, the sponsors and HBO and the promoters said goodbye to Hampton Halls, and said, we're going up island, and we're going to try to find somebody else to do these things. That, I think, may have hurt Hampton Halls because they didn't have too many events, according to the copulation that was provided by the opposing council. I think there were only like four, five or six events that occurred during that time. Anyway, so that by the end of two thousand and nine, they petered out. They, they kind of left. Charlie had once told me that he thinks that they were told to leave, but that's just speculation on my part. But what they did when they went in there, they opened up a thing called the Moroccan nightclub. And that's what the whole thing was based on, a Moroccan nightclub, and that's all the events they had there. I'm not saying that you could read the Southampton Press, it'll tell you that right there in, in the copulation from the, from the opposing council. It was a Moroccan nightclub. Anyway, it didn't do very well, and they closed. And then two thousand and ten to two thousand and nineteen, of which I am firsthand witness from two thousand and twelve on, they leased both the upper level and the lower level, which they called two thirty Down, and the upper level they called two thirty Ballroom to Tim Burke Productions, and he proceeded to have third-party promotions, joining up with Conscious Point, and I think we all remember Conscious Point, and another organization called Roly Productions. And for those years, they put on dozens and dozens and dozens of hip-hop, rock and roll band, Latin music, reggae, everything, every kind of old promotions as a nightclub. And I had some young friends who lived next shore, and I asked them, you know, why, why are you going over there? What's happening? He said, it's really a great, it's a crazy club. It's great. You got to come over here. I, I never went, but it was all about being a nightclub until four o'clock in the morning. And then I stopped some other kids who I saw going up to the upper level, and over time, I chatted them up, and they told me they were going there for the nightclub event, for the experience, for the dancing, for the hip-hop, for the DJs. Not, nobody ever said they were going there for the food. It was all going there because it was a big, big party. It was a nightclub. And, and, and I'm not trying to be judgmental about what these, what, what was happening over there. I'm just trying to illustrate to you that through these years, it was not a caterer, it was a nightclub. And I think that's what, what, what really was going on over there, and it, it was just, it was just an amazing event, and I went through the attorney, the opposing current, current copulation today, and everything up until two thousand and three was all parties and, and social club activities. No commercial business. And then all of a sudden, after two thousand and three, all the way up to two thousand and nineteen, it became a commercial business of parties, DJs and discos, and nothing about food. So that's, that's my two cents, and I hope that helps you out. Maybe Charlie, I mean, Michael Zinder can add a little bit more. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chair, would you like Michael Zinder to come in now?
Yeah, yes.
Okay.
Okay, can everybody hear me?
Yes.
My name is, as is indicated, Michael Zinder. I own a residence and live on Plasky Street, which is just right around the corner from the two thirty Elm Polish Hall. And I've also rented in the village for many, many years, so I have some significant experience with the Polish Hall. Couple of things. First, I just wanted to thank the members of the ZBA for listening to us tonight. I appreciate you all as public servants, doing what's often a thankless job, but it's a very important job. And I hope that you all will take seriously into consideration the points made by Anton before and by the rest of us, because this is an important matter. What you're going to hear from the other side, and for those of you who haven't received any materials, it's unfortunate because I know Anton's argument had a lot of technicality to it. I just wanted to briefly cut through that for a little bit. But the bottom line on here, and what you should take away from tonight, is that what they're trying to do is a fundamental change. And that's what I think Jay and, and Charlie were trying to indicate from a factual perspective. It's a fundamental change of what's been going on there. And you're going to hear all about that, oh, we're just doing what we always did, and, and at the planning board, various people stood up and said, oh, the Polish Hall's always had events. I don't know why these neighbors are complaining. It's, this is fundamental. This is substantial. This is different. As, as was stated before, if they had their way, they've stated publicly, they'd like to have events there three hundred and sixty-five days a year. In the past, it's been a very occasional use from time to time. If you look at their own submission, their own submission supports our point, several of our points, including that it was an occasionally used facility over the years. You know, if you look in various months, oftentimes on that list, that four-page list they attached to their submission today, you know, there may be four events in, in, in four months sometimes, or in maximum, you know, two events a, a week, over a weekend or something. That's very different than having events on a constant basis. That's point one. Point two, what is this really all about? Well, as Anton suggested, catering, as you all know, is a prohibited use in the village. It's prohibited by law. They can't, nobody can open up a catering establishment without proper approvals. And this establishment was never a catering hall. It was a social hall. It was, I, I've had several sons who have gone to events there in the last half dozen years before Tim Burke stopped. And as was suggested, it was a nightclub sort of situation, and before that, it was a social hall for members and their, their families. It was never as a catering hall, and somehow, in this tortured history that Anton went through, and that you should carefully look at his papers, because it'll explain it more clearly, somehow their building permit got changed back in, I think it was two thousand and ten or so, to all of a sudden, the word catering appeared in their building, in their permit for the first time. And that was not, it was not approved by anybody, and I think it was just the press, building inspector got a little bamboozled by them and stuck that in there. And so the Polish Hall folks, who I'm sure are going to speak tonight, and they're a high-priced attorney, and they're going to say, hey, look, we had a permit for catering, and we're doing catering, and we've always done catering. Please don't be misled by all that. This is a fundamental change in what they're doing. This is something that's, that's very different for the community, and the community is very concerned about what's going on here. It's a very residential community. Many of us have, have been around for a number of years, and, you know, one of the members of the Polish Hall was quoted in the Southampton Press on a different matter not too long ago, about something where he was very upset that people who didn't live in the area where he lives were butting in and making comments about it. And I would suggest, when the people, representatives of the Polish Hall make their comments later, they should take into account the advice of their own, which was, they don't live here. None of them live here anymore. They may, they, they'll talk all about how, you know, they're part of this community too, and they have, they have concern for this community. They don't live here. Some of them may own here. They don't live here anymore, and they'll tell you, I, I, this is a great thing. This is wonderful, and they'll have people supporting them, maybe even speaking tonight, saying what a great thing this is. Please don't be fooled by that. This is a fundamental change. They're, they're trying to do an unpermitted use. They got lucky and got a little change to their certificate. Nobody noticed because it was never that many big time- They got lucky and got a little change to their certificate. Nobody noticed because it was never that many big time events. This is not an area that should be having events three hundred days a year. I very much appreciate your consideration of this matter. Seriously, thank you.
Thank you.
Chair, there's two hands up. One, someone just with the first name of Vincent and one, Mr. Richard Hamburger. Who who of those would you like?
And Anton has 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 the floor.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay.
Let let's bring back Anton and see. He initially said that he wanted these three gentlemen to speak and let's let's see if his presentation is complete and then we can move from there.
Okay. Mr. Borvina, you're in as a panelist. You can unmute. And turn on your camera, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. That includes really our our presentation. I do ask that you look at the history of the use. And not to repeat it again. I would now look forward to hearing the comments, of course, by by those on the other side who perhaps argue differently. But just bear in mind that as as the very records before this village established, as indicated by issuances of previous building permits in the nineteen thirties, nineteen sixties, as indicated by the letter of the village attorney, this was prior to nineteen seventy, that the existing use was always as a social, a clubhouse. If anything, what the dramatic change occurred in two thousand and nine, when all of a sudden it started to be used as a disco, as as a disco operation itself, an unlawful use. But and now today, the proposed use of elegant affairs is undisputed. That's why they want to use it, is as a commercial catering establishment, which is a prohibited use and does not qualify for a continuance as a pre-existing non-conforming use. Certainly as a principal use, that's the that is true. And at best, an incidental use, but incidental to the primary use as a social club. Again, thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board for your patience.
We're gonna leave it open for all purposes when when we're complete anyway, because we do need some time to to go through and read through all the materials that have been submitted. But if that's, if that is the end of your presentation, yes, we'll hear from others. I wanted to make sure that you were
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, please.
Complete.
Do you know what, Mark, could I ask a question to Mr. Borvina?
Yeah, you know what? Let me bring him back in. I apologize. I just took him out. Mr. Borvina, you're in as a panelist. Could you start your camera and turn on your microphone, please? Thank you.
Okay, okay, I'm in as a panelist.
I just wanted to ask you a quick question.
Oh, yes.
For me, if you don't mind. It was a lot of information to unpack. I have a lot of happy memories of the Polish Hall. I want to get this right. And I just want to make sure I'm understanding your point. You're saying regardless of what has gone on there in the past, we need to look now at what is a permitted use for the property and a catering hall is not a permitted use. Do I understand you correctly?
Well, well, yes, when you say regardless of what happened in the past, well, no, you have to take into account, sir, we got what happened in the past.
Okay.
What what, you know, we're not, we're not revising history here. The what happened in the past, as stated in my, what my presentation, as well as the as the applicants themselves, was that it was a a social club use, a building, a CFO, to the extent it was issued in the year two thousand and three, for example. And to the extent it allowed bowling, bars, catering, meeting halls, we have no problems with that.
Sure.
It was understood in the context of a incidental use. Lo and behold, they now come forward and say, ah, this is the tail wagging the dog here now. We now want to have a a catering morph suddenly into a principal commercial catering facility. And that has no place in this residential neighborhood, has no place under the code. And had certainly had no place as a principal use prior to nineteen seventy-three or even after nineteen seventy-three.
Right.
Thank you. If I've answered your question.
No, I think you have. I mean, it's definitely become a difficult area to live in on Saturday nights in the summer, for sure. What is your understanding of what the building permit request was? I was going through the plans and it looks as if it was a elevator, some bathroom modifications. Like my real question is, what would what would be your response to me saying that I think this sounds more like a code enforcement issue rather than a zoning board of appeals issue? Because in so much as the current building permit is concerned, there has been no catering on site yet. And the building owner does have a right to build and renovate their building as they see fit. Yet you can't automatically, I think, infer what the future use will be based upon the permitted changes in the current application. Now, should a couple of weeks pass after these modifications are made to the building and there's a wedding there every Saturday and a, you know, this or that on Sunday and Friday nights, or if something happens three hundred sixty-five days a year, then certainly that would be a code enforcement issue. But I I think it's a, it may be a bridge too far for us to predict what it will be used for when it hasn't been used that way yet.
But they've stated what they're going to do.
I'm sorry?
They have stated what their use would be.
By the way, may I say, sir? Yes, if I may, I'm sorry if I've interrupted. I hope I have not. What they have, what they have said, Brian, I appreciate your comments, Mr. Freeman. For at least to say it's both and it's both, that is, yes, it's a code enforcement. But before we get to the code enforcement, there has to be an understanding of what the code says. And and one of the functions of this board is to determine what has been done in the past by way of issuances of building inspect, building permits and certificate of occupancies. And as to whether or not it allows this kind of a use. Now, let's go to, you asked, you asked the question, let's, what is exactly being proposed by the building permit? Well, the building permit, it's a fair question. The building permit would seemingly indicate they simply want to make interior renovations. They want to remove a wall. They want to add bathrooms. I I I I suppose you could make the case that that's, gee, this, what, and what's wrong with that? Well, I would argue that if I want, if if, and think of it this way. If you have a a a an applicant who owns a residential home, who wants to remove a wall in the basement, innocuous to convert a single family residence into a multi-family residence. All of a sudden, this so-called innocuous benign use, I'm simply removing a wall, becomes an issue. You can't do that. And by the way, what I'm saying is supported by the code, what is supported by the by the by the villagers on code. The actual, I invite you to look at section one sixteen hyphen thirty-seven. It says that no building permit shall be issued for the erection, et cetera, restoration, repair, or moving of any building or structure apart thereof, unless the plans and intended use, by the way, not the actual, the intended. And and as as Ms. Stevenson intimated in her question, there is, it's, there is no doubt, Zippo, Naga, no doubt whatsoever, that the use that's being proposed here is as a commercial use, commercial catering, as a primary use. We would say that that shouldn't even be allowed as an incidental use. But they wanted, at least they're being honest. They're coming forward and saying, we want it as a commercial. And and that is prohibited. And we ask the board to recognize that and therefore to to declare, to hold and rescind the building permit as unlawfully issued.
Okay, I I appreciate the clarification. Thank you.
Let me, let me just ask a basic question. So I have some basic facts. What does the current certificate of occupancy state?
The current certificate of occupancy of, it was two issued in in, I can, I I, they're on my, I can get them for you, but I happen to know what they are. In two thousand and two thousand and three, the the certificate of occupancy simply says, when in terms of use, pre-existing. But in terms of the, but there you go. Okay, excellent. But in terms of, in terms of the, it's, I now see it on my screen, by the way, the CFO, which speaks for itself. It calls out a meeting room of, okay. Meeting rooms were pre-existing, meeting use, consistent with the social club use, by the way. A bar, also consistent with a social club use. A bowling alley, also consistent with a social club use. I mean, was there catering in the kitchen? Well, yeah, of course. When you have weddings for members and guests, I have no doubt and we have no objections to the fact that there were food, it was food being served in that context. But note that the certificate of occupancy was not intended to be the creation of a new use and certainly not a commercial use. And to the extent it was, it was unlawful. Because again, the only ones who can issue, the no building inspector has the authority out of administer, again, out of administrative fiat to create a new use when that that use was not authorized in the past. And that's well established law. If I answered your question, Mr. Wolf.
I am not sure. Is that the most recent certificate of occupancy, the one that we just looked at in two thousand?
Well, there's one, no, there's one in two thousand and three.
There's a more recent, yes.
Yes, there's another one in two thousand and three.
Okay, let's look at two thousand and three. Jeff, who can?
It'll be certificate nine two two two. I'm wondering if whoever put it up before will be able to, again, I believe that certificate nine two 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 refers to the specific use of catering.
I have it here, by the way. I have it on my screen. I know, I really don't know. Here's what it says, if I may. It says, it was issued on on May twenty seven, two thousand and three. This certifies that the buildings located at two thirty Elm Street and upon the plot described upon the village tax rolls as follows, north, American Polish Club, east, American Polish Club, south, Pulaski Street, west, Elm Street, conforms to all applicable versions of the zoning ordinance of the villages Southampton, as amended today. Same conforms substantially to the approved plans and specifications here to profile with this office and with the application for the building permit pursuant to which, which, to which building permit, number, date, pre-existing. The occupancy for which this certify, this certificate is issued is for catering, meeting, contract facilities at a bar. It's parenthesis, not license for nightclub use, close parenthesis. This cert, this certificate is issued to, by the way, Hampton Hall LLC, a tenant. It was done by by Chris Talbot. So by the way, I believe it's, I I have it here, but I am optimistic that you have, you have a copy of it as part of your records as well.
It is included in an attachment to a submission by, I believe, by the owner.
I think so. Yes, yes, that's correct.
So let me just understand, is your, is part of your argument that although the CFO states that the owner can use the premises as a catering hall, that that terminology doesn't include a commercial business?
Well, well, first of all, can you, yes, but let's, let's, let me explore your question a little bit further. What the argument is, is that to the extent that the various kinds of uses, that is, for example, a a catering, meeting hall, conference, a bar, those were intended not to, those were intended to be incidental uses. It's a use. Okay, it's a use. So it doesn't mean, however, that it was intended to be a commercial establishment. It's unprecedented as at the time that CFO was issued. It's unprecedented at the time the building permits were issued. The only times things change for a commercial use, as indicated, we indicated as part of our presentation, was in the year two thousand and nine, when it started to be used as a as a nightclub, which itself is not a catering use. And so the use that was contemplated, we we contend, was as a incidental use. And 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 nothing more than that. And and we contend as further argument that all of us, that the that the reference of an incidental use in a CFO intended to be nothing more than a incidental use, not as a primary use, did not purport to change any primary use at all, doesn't all of a sudden come turn into a a a lawful use. It's much like a CFO, by the way. I'd like to, I apply for a CFO because I want, I want to have a, I have a little garden in my backyard and I want to have a, I want to be able to use a shed in the backyard for that kind of purpose. And I I live in a home, it's a residential area. You approve the CFO and you allow me to have that kind of a shed for for the purpose of a garden. And now I just, I can't turn around and then say, well, as a result of that incidental use, I've now discontinued, abandoned my residential use, which was the principal use. And I now want an agricultural use to be the primary. I mean, I'm just giving you by way of analogy as to what my, what my point is. And that's exactly the kind of situation we have here with respect to Polish Hall. It was a social club. There may have been events such as catering. And by the way, to the extent that the building inspector in two thousand and two thousand and three memorialized by by allowing a catering use, it was in that context and not to create and never intended to create a new use, a principal use, let alone a commercial use as 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 a as a catering facility.
So then then I'll follow up with the question. Is this an enforcement issue or where does our authority?
Well, your, well, your authority comes in because, first of all, before you now is the issuance. Let me talk about the authority and jurisdiction. It's an important question. Before you now is the building permit. It was issued and you have the jurisdiction, you are an appellate body. You have the jurisdiction to review to the issuance of the building permit to substitute the judgment and determination that was issued then for your judge, based upon your understanding of what the zoning code is. And and for the reasons I indicated, I submit that the building permit was should not have been issued because it was in further, it's, it was intended to further an intended use. They admitted that intended use, which is an unlawful use, namely a commercial of catering facility. So that's your jurisdiction. That's your authority. By the way, you, I would also say you all have additional jurisdiction, as it were. You have the authority under the village law to render interpretations. Now, that's, that's the secondary component. I'm really here for the building permit, by the way. But to the extent that a CFO is somehow, somehow sanctifies and blesses the, whatever the applicant, whatever elegant affairs is wanting to do, I would say that if you take a look at the CFO, I'm trying my best not to repeat myself. But if you take a look at the CFO, it was simply issued in the context as an incidental use. We have, like bowling alley was, by as as meeting halls were and as a bar. None of those incidental uses were intended or contemplated, we submit, when they were issued by the village years ago, to now all of a sudden become the primary use. That is, a bowling alley as a primary use, a bar as a primary use. None of that was allowed. It was always in the context of an incidental use. And that's the key.
And what my question really is, so let's say that that it evolves that the board revokes the building permit. Don't they still continue to use the premises as, you know, the the purposes provided in their in their new lease? Because they still have the same situation. They just are unable to put up some interior walls. What does that accomplish?
Well, well, let's, let's follow, let's, let's, let's follow your hypothetical. You revoke the building permit. Well, that means, by the way, first of all, it's an indication by the, by the village and which of the courts would recognize. It's an indication, determination made by the village that the use always remained as a social club with an incidental use as a catering. Now, look, at the appropriate time down the road, let's follow your hypothetical. If down the road, it, the social club use is still being used and occasionally you're having a catering use. And you know, and the facts demonstrate that it's an incidental use, like Charlie indicated, by the way, and other witnesses indicated. I'm not, I I would submit that we would not have a problem with that. And let, let me just say that that hybrid, that when those kinds of facts, facts arise, they would be addressed when they do arise. Today, however, today, before you today, as of May twenty-six, twenty twenty-two, is an intended use as a commercial catering facility. And not simply as a, oh gee, let's have a, let, you know, let's have a few catering events with, because we want to have, some of our members and guests want to have weddings. Or we're, we're having the hospital. We want to invite the Southampton Hospital staff for a Christmas Eve celebration and recognition of the service that they do. And and still, let's give them food. Let's use the kitchen. We want to, we want to cater that event. Okay, that's okay. That, that's been used in the past. And we would, we would not have trouble with that. But a commercial catering facility, that's where the problem is. And now all of a sudden, you've converted, you've converted a non-existent commercial use, which at best was an incidental use, as a principal use. which at best was an incidental use, as a principal use, and that's where the problem is. And, and, and you have the jurisdiction to set aside the building permit on that basis. Now, I, um, I, you know, and again, if the, if the applicant is saying we intend it only to be an incidental use and not as a principal use, we intend to honor its use as a social club, well then, but they're not saying that. And, and I, and I can't speak for them, but that, and they're not saying, and that's why the board does have jurisdiction and authority to revoke the building permit.
Yes, my, my question is, our, our revocation of the building permit will only prevent the, the, um, uh, the tenant, the lessy from, from accomplishing some interior walls in an elevator, it doesn't say anything about continuing to use it as a commercial enterprise, in other words.
Oh, sure, uh, please leave that to us. Yeah, once the building, once this board has vacated the building permit, by the way, which means there cannot be any further renovations. Uh, obviously, there's, there's, there's no hiding it. It seemed that if, if Elegant Affairs should nevertheless, in defiance of the determination made by this board, proceed, um, to use the Polish Hall for a commercial catering establishment, uh, there would be remedies, um, not, not only to be undertaken in terms of code enforcement, by the way, but also on behalf of residents of the village who in their own right, uh, could take action, legal action, to prevent that unlawful use. So I get, in, in some respects, Mr. Chairman, um, you know, I guess it's true, if you did, if, once you revoke the permit, what physically prevents Elegant Affairs from, frankly, what, what are you going, you can't get a gun and shoot them. I mean, that's what they want to do, there are legal remedies and legal remedy is, by the way, is to enjoin and prevent the continuation of that illegal use. Uh, and that by, simply because the village issued a building permit, which it thereafter rescinded, doesn't mean we have sanctified, Judge, a use, uh, a, uh, which was at best incidental into a principal use, which is now a commercial catering use. So that's what, that's, that, that argument would be raised down the road, once you, once you, um, uh, exercise your authority, jurisdiction and rescind the building permit because it was unlawfully issued. And that's the specific request being made of you, uh, today.
Yeah, I think I just, do any of the board members have questions, Susan or Julia?
You're muted, Julia.
I said, not at this time, I'd like to have the opportunity to review the materials, which I did not receive in a timely manner. To really be able to absorb all of this, this is a great deal of information and we've only heard one side.
Susan, do you have any questions at this stage?
No, I had been somewhat confused about what our jurisdiction is, but it turns out because we are a board of appeals and have never really been confronted with such a situation, although I think there is another application of a similar nature. That that is our jurisdiction to to decide whether if someone brings an action, uh, an application, whether or not an action by the building, uh, department or is acceptable, is, is, it can be, is correct, I guess, is that right, Jeff?
There, there are a couple of things that go on with respect to it. Under the village law, this board does have the power, as an appellate board, to review, interpret, modify, amend or to reverse determinations of officials that are charged with code enforcement, but there are really three issues here and I realize there's a lot of material that the board will be reviewing. Um, there's the jurisdiction issue, the second is a, a question of timeliness um, that Mr. Boravino alluded to and I expect that the owner's counsel will allude to. Under the applicable village law, an application for such an amendment must be made within sixty days from which the determination was made. Uh, Mr. Boravino has made his argument as to why he believes the application is properly before the board in terms of timeliness, uh, based upon the materials and the board will review these and I will follow up with the board regarding, regarding the legal nature of it. I believe the owner's, uh, counsel will be making a very different argument that the board will hear. So that's the third, that's the second of, of the issues that I believe is before the board. Um, the, the substance of the application being asked for the board to determine is with respect to the building permit that was issued for work of an interior nature within the structure. Um, so that is the specific application before the board. The reason the prior COs are coming up is because, as Mr. Boravino points out, he is arguing that that goes to the intent for which the application was made. Um, again, there are extensive materials before the board that the board hasn't had the opportunity to review that discusses the prior history of the use and, and should the board move past the timeliness uh, argument, that would be for the board to consider. But that's a long answer to what was a short question, which is, does the board have jurisdiction over this type of application? You do have jurisdiction, but there are issues here that, that include both jurisdiction, timeliness of the application, uh, the substance of the application and whether or not the COs, which are referenced by Mr. Boravino, are also properly before the board, those having been issued in two thousand and two thousand and three. Um, so those are the issues that are being considered.
May I speak?
Of course.
Yes, and furthermore, what Mr. Blinkoff said, uh, the primary issue, uh, basis of the appeal is the building permit. This, the reason why we're mentioning the CFO is because, because the claim has been made by the, uh, the application, the building permit application made in December of twenty twenty, that of course is justified, uh, to have a catering use. Look what happened with the CFO and our review, when you look at the CFO, it does, does it mention catering? Yes, it does, uh, on that, we say, by the way, this is where, this is now from the interpretive powers. That's, that's why I just wanted to follow up with what Mr. Blinkoff said. You also, we also request that you exercise your interpretive powers and that is that with respect to a CFO, we're not seeking the CFO in two thousand and two thousand and three to be rescinded unless it was intended that those CEOs all of a sudden created a new use out of whole cloth. Then it should be rescinded, but we think it was simply issued to recognize, you can, you can have, if you're having a wedding, you can have catering. Okay, fine, that's, you can have a, a new kitchen to promote a catering use, a, a, a wedding reception, I should say. Uh, that was the intended use then, there's nothing in the record then, in two, in two thousand or two thousand and three, let alone today, where the intended use was to, to be changed. The CFO, uh, uh, that was, uh, sort, sort way back when, was intended to recognize a entirely new use. We say it was simply a recognition of a incidental use and we, and that's the interpretive powers we are asking the board to consider, but the primary purpose we're here is to set aside the building permit.
Okay, thank you.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Alex, did, did you want to speak to, um, the procedure in, involved right now?
Sure, yeah, I just did want to point out, as was mentioned, the trustees did recently pass a code amendment with regard to site plan review. That code amendment changed which applications, uh, for site plan review was required. Um, that change did not affect this particular application, site plan review was still required for this. Um, and the stop work order that was in place was lifted as a result of them receiving their site plan approval. Um, not directly as a result of the, the trustees' actions, so I just wanted to clarify that. Um, just another point that, um, a social club is a special exception use in the, in the VB district. Um, I don't know if I heard something to the contrary, but I just wanted to, to clarify that, uh, for the board. Um, and then I think Mr. Boravino for clarifying the interpretation that is also part of this request with, with respect to the use in addition to the permit.
Um, go back, a, a social club is a, could you go back there and in this district, it's a special use?
In the VB, uh, Village Business District, it is a special exception use. Um, so that means it would come to this board, to the Board of Zoning Appeals, to show that it met the criteria. And that's a philip, philanthropic fraternal, social or educational institutional office or meeting room nonprofit. Um, I, I thought it was stated that it was a prohibited use here, so I just wanted to, to clarify that.
But it, it never did appear before the zoning board for a special exception use, did it? To, to everybody.
It did not, no.
Thank you, Alex. Julie, let's, let's find out if, if the owners of, of the property would like to address the board.
Sure, there's a Richard Hamburger with his hand, hand up. Is that, um, is that the owner, I don't know who owns?
He's, he is counsel to the owners, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, then, yes, Julie, let, let Mr., is it Hamburger?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Hamburger, you are in as a panelist?
There I am. Good evening, everyone. I'm Richard Hamburger, I'm attorney in Melville, Long Island with hamburger, Maxon, Yaffie and Martingale. And I do represent the owner, which is the Polish-American political club of Southampton, NYINC, which was organized in nineteen twenty-eight as a business corporation. There's a lot here I have to say and my fear in these situations is always I'm going to forget um, something that I want to say and it's difficult to know where to begin. But let me begin, if I may, with focusing on the nature of the application. Um, this is an application by Mr. Fitzpatrick, the applicant. Uh, Mr. Boravino says he represents a number of people, but the applicant is Mr. Fitzpatrick, um, who hasn't signed the applicant endorsement, by the way, which is a technical issue. But Mr. Fitzpatrick is asking this board for two things, an interpretation and rescission. He wants to rescind the building permit that was issued for alterations based upon an interpretation of the code that the certificate of occupancy issued twenty years ago should never have been issued. But it was issued and as was pointed out, it says that on the main floor, catering hall and kitchen is what the building is certified for. And that's accurate and within the embrace of the building permit. The building permit seeking alterations to the building and didn't change the use, no intended changes to the use of the main floor for catering hall and kitchen. And Mr. Boravino, I withdraw that, Mr. Fitzpatrick doesn't challenge that anything in the building permit regarding the alterations was wrong. He's not saying you shouldn't have approved this wall, you shouldn't have allowed this work on the window, you shouldn't have um, done this work on the bathroom, the, the work itself is all within the code and is unobjectionable. The issue is, and I think it's clear from Mr. Boravino's remarks, he's saying the building permit should not have issued because of the use. The problem is, the use was certified over twenty years ago to the Polish-American, um, club in the certificate of occupancy, which I just read, eight, one, eight, seven. And the law is very clear that you can't use a building permit that's consistent with the certificate of occupancy issued years and years ago to challenge that certificate of occupancy, which should have been challenged years and years ago. Uh, a certificate of occupancy can be appealed within sixty days to the zoning board of appeals. A building permit can be appealed within sixty days to the zoning board of appeals. But if a certificate of occupancy, for example, issues in two thousand and twenty, that merely restates, recapitulates the use on a certificate of occupancy that was issued ten years earlier in two thousand and ten, that doesn't restart your clock. And the Court of Appeals has said this very, very clearly in a case that I brought to the attention of the board and Mr. Blinkoff in a memorandum that we filed yesterday. And so has Martha Luft, Justice of the Supreme Court, more recently in two thousand and eighteen. I just want to note that I'm not the applicant, so my papers are not late. I had intended to appear at the zoning board hearing and distribute these papers. And as a courtesy, I was sending the memorandum of law on earlier so that the board and Mr. Blinkoff would have an opportunity to know where I was going. I learned yesterday that the meeting was exclusively going to be on Zoom, which has caused us some problems. Um, and I'm glad that we're going to be adjourning the hearing because a number of the senior citizen, extreme senior citizen witnesses that I had intended to bring to the hearing aren't comfortable with Zoom and I had to draft affidavits for them, which were also submitted today, uh, before noon to the clerk. So I'm not late in my papers because I'm not the applicant. It's the applicant who's asking for an interpretation that would open the door to reviewing a certificate of occupancy that was issued over twenty years ago. And that's time barred by clear authority. It's not my burden here to establish that we have a prior, not pre-existing, non-conforming use. There is an application in the law that would be made to the zoning board of appeals where an owner would come in and ask for a certificate which recognized the pre-existing non-conforming use and they'd have to put on pre-evidence, uh, various witnesses and they'd have to show it consistent over the years. That's not where we are, that's not my burden, that's not what's before the ZBA. It's Mr. Fitzpatrick application through a building permit, which didn't expand upon or change any use to reopen and revisit a certificate of occupancy issued more than twenty years ago and that the law does not permit. In addition, Mr. Boravino's theory that the change in the local law extended his time beyond the sixty days for challenging the building permit, which was issued in March of two thousand and twenty-one, doesn't hold up either, as Mr. Wallach pointed out, that change in the law didn't change anything with respect to this particular situation or this application. But I'd also point out that the building permit was issued in March and the stop work order was issued in October. So there was more than ample time between March and October, more than sixty days to file an application to the zoning board of appeals to challenge the building permit, so it's time barred. In addition to being time barred, there isn't jurisdiction because the Board of Zoning Appeals only has jurisdiction to hear an appeal from something that the building official did, from a determination that was made or to ask for interpretation. And all that the building, the inspector did in this case was issue a building permit which was consistent with the twenty-year-old CEO. And again, there's nothing in that permit which is being objected to in terms of the physical work that was covered by that permit. That's kind of a very related idea to being time barred, but the jurisdiction issue and the time barred issue are just different ways of looking at the same thing. You can't take an appeal to a building permit and reopen something that occurred twenty years ago if the building permit isn't expanding or exchange or the use. Now, Mr. Boravino is trying to make a case that first, Mr. Boravino is talking about what the intent was of the certificate of occupancy. He also talked about the intent of the social club back in nineteen twenty-eight. He doesn't know these things. I'd love to have the building inspector come and talk about what his intent was. I welcome you to talk to this building inspector now about his intent when he issued the building permit. I have no objection to that. Certificate of occupancy says what it says, the building permit application said what it said. And there is no distinction in the code between primary use, accessory use, incidental use, subordinate use, whatever Mr. Boravino wants to call it. There's no distinction when it comes to pre-existing non-conforming uses. Either it was or was not a pre-existing non-conforming use. There's no primary pre-existing, no incidental pre-existing, no subordinate pre-existing, it's not in the code. It's in the code with respect to some other issues. Residentially, typically you have a house, you can have an accessory use, you can have a shed. It's not relevant concept. This was a pre-existing lawful use as recognized in nine, in two thousand by certificate of occupancy eighty-one, eighty-seven. Now, a few things I don't want to forget. Commercial, noncommercial. Polish Hall was always in the commercial business. They had lots of events, and if you were a member of the club and you had a wedding, you paid Polish Hall for that wedding. That's how they made money. That's how they paid their bills. If you were not a member and you were a member of the Polish community. You paid Polish Hall for the wedding. They used that money to pay their bills. If you weren't a member of the community, but you still had an event there, you paid them. It always was a situation where people paid to have events. And there were many, 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 many events, which I will get into here with witnesses, with affidavits and at the adjournment time. The compilation. Is this? And it was emailed and delivered to the zoning board of appeals clerk earlier in the day. It's not intended to be a list of every event that ever occurred. Because it's taken from local newspapers. And most things weren't in local newspapers. It was intended to give an idea of the variety and the types of events that from the nineteen thirties. Have been taking place at Polish Hall. We have for. We have, for example, I don't know who that was, but I may I continue?
Of course, of course.
Yeah, for example, a Mister. Serbinski, who's waiting to speak next. Who is seventy nine years old, excuse me, Mister Serbinski. He has personal recollections of what went on there. But there's also a very close relationship between Polish Hall and the. Our Lady of Poland Roman Catholic Church, which is down Pulaski Street. And it was very, very common for decades for the weddings to occur at the church. And then the wedding party would go over to Polish Hall and they would have a reception. It's very, very common for there to be a funeral at the church, and then the funeral party would walk over to Polish Hall and they would have a reception. Mister Serbinski has the documentation. He went there and showed over a twenty year period. From nineteen fifty to nineteen thirty year, excuse me, nineteen fifty to nineteen seventy nine, there were three hundred eighty eight weddings. Ninety percent of those people, we estimate, if not more, walked down Pulaski Street and had their receptions at Polish Hall. And that works out to about thirteen a year. Why is that important? Because. This three hundred sixty five day a year quote is unfortunate. It's a misquote. It never happened. Mister Borovina should know better. First, in his memorandum, I don't, I'm not saying this is intentional, but in his papers, he cites it to the. Architectural Review Board. It wasn't said at the Architectural Review Board. It was cited at the Planning Board. And our memorandum gives you the video clip where it happened. The gentleman who said it is not a principal. Who made him a principal? I don't know. He's an agent who was at the hearing. He was, it's clear from the context that he was saying, well, we do a three hundred fifty five days a year if we could. He was joking. And then when he was asked after that, now seriously, what's your plan? He said, well, we do between twelve and eighteen weddings a year typically. That's what we expect, twelve to eighteen. Now, twelve to eighteen is a little more than thirteen, but it's not out of the ballpark. And and as a matter of law, and again, we note this in our papers. If it's a permitted use for catering. And as long as they're doing catering and as long as they're doing it on the second floor, as the certificate of occupancy says, you don't have control over how many weddings they have. That's not an expansion or an enlargement of the use, the number of it. It's not something you police. It's not a condition that was put upon the certificate of occupancy and they can do it, but you should know. That it's not doing any violence to the type of activities that went on there. Now, I am a little bit of a witness here because I personally know coincidentally Andrea Corialy of Elegant Affairs. Because I'm also the attorney for the Nassau County Museum of Art. And her company has been a caterer there for, and I've been their their attorney for more than twenty five years. And she has been for periods of that time, their exclusive caterer or one of the caterers that they use. She runs an extraordinarily professional operation and the weddings occur one a weekend, not every weekend because they're not all booked. And they're between, they're in the wedding season, which basically begins in May and goes sometime to the end of September, sometimes the beginning of October. So in that quarter of a year, you have the opportunity for thirteen weddings typically. So the numbers are within the kind of range that we're talking about. But I'm not a witness on the history. We have witnesses on the history. But those witnesses will tell you that there were weddings, there were anniversaries, that Kiwanis claim that the veterans of. Excuse me, that the Sag Harbor Police Department held their annual banquet there all the time. So did the Southampton. Fire Department, I said Police Department, Fire Departments, that the Kiwanis Club. That the veterans of foreign wars, there were many, many organizations that looked to Polish Hall because Polish Hall was the only place in town. That could accommodate a large crowd. And every time they came, they ate, and when they ate, they paid. It was a commercial establishment. In terms of the. If you were to get to the merits, which I don't believe you can get to because of jurisdiction and time barred issues, timeliness issues. The interpretation, if you call it an interpretation. Of the building inspector is rational, and that would be as far as the law permits you to go. It was rational based upon the history of the use for him to say that the catering that is intended by Elegant Affairs. Is close enough within the embrace of what had historically taken place. As is common knowledge in the village and as is permitted by the certificate of occupancy that provides for a quote catering hall and kitchen on the main floor. I have to present to the board Vincent Serbinski, who I believe is in the waiting room. I have affidavits from Louis Louise Grodsky, who would have come but could not manage Zoom. She's eighty nine years old. Catherine Peramba, who also would have come but could not manage Zoom, who's eighty two years old. And from Vincent, also known as Butch Armashewitz, or Armushewitz, who's seventy nine years old. Who would have come but could not manage Zoom. The Grodsky and Peramba papers are before you. I would like to read them because they're brief. Would that be okay, Mister Chairman?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, so Louise Brodsky says. After an introductory paragraph, I am eighty nine years old and live at one oh seven County Road thirty nine A Southampton. I have lived in Southampton my entire life. My husband, Henry Grodsky, was a member of the club at Polish Hall. I have firsthand knowledge that catering exists at Polish Hall both prior to and after April thirteen nineteen seventy three. That's the code date that we're talking about. My husband and I were married at Our Lady of Poland Roman Catholic Church and had our reception at Polish Hall in nineteen fifty three. I personally know a lot of others who had weddings and receptions at Polish Hall. Also, all the local fire departments had their annual banquets at Polish Hall. In fact, my husband was a volunteer firefighter and joined the hook and ladder company of Southampton Fire Department in nineteen sixty. And we attended their annual banquet as early as nineteen sixty one. The local Kiwanis Club also had its awards nights at Polish Hall in honor of policemen. The Lions Club had fashion shows and Chinese auctions. The Polish Church had catered events there too, as did Our Lady of the Hampton School. My husband was also trustee of the club and the catered events brought in a lot of money and kept Polish Hall running. When he was a member of Polish Hall, they wanted my husband to take over booking the parties that had been held there for decades. And to help them with catering in the nineteen nineties. He ran the events for about ten years, and when he started to not feel well, Polish Hall was first rented out and catered events continued. Our four children had their wedding receptions at Polish Hall too. Polish Hall is the only place in town that could accommodate hundreds of people. Everyone in the Southampton community knew that. Anyone who says that Polish Hall was not regularly and extensively used for catered events unrelated to club activities. From at least the nineteen fifties on does not know the true facts. I hope the ZBA allows Polish Hall to continue to support itself and to rent its building for continued use as a catering facility. Catherine Peramba says. I am eighty two years old and live at one ten North Main Street in the Village of Southampton. I grew up and have spent my entire life in the Village of Southampton. My grandparents were founders of Our Lady of Poland Roman Catholic Church around the corner from Polish Hall, where both my husband and I were members. I have firsthand knowledge that catering existed at Polish Hall both prior to and after April thirteen nineteen seventy three. And that Polish Hall was available to the community for catered events, not just to the club for club functions. And not just the club members for private parties, but also to other organizations and members of the communities who were not members of the club. This was common knowledge in the Southampton community. In part, this was because Polish Hall was the only place in the village, large enough to hold most gatherings. The local Elks Club and VFW Hall were too small. Polish Hall was regularly rented for private weddings. One of the earliest weddings I remember at Polish Hall took place in nineteen forty nine. Shortly after a second addition was added to the building when I was about ten years old. Many, many more weddings regularly took place after that. Typical of those wedding receptions in nineteen sixty, my husband and I were married in Our Lady of Poland Church. And we walked down the street to Polish Hall and had our wedding reception there with over three hundred guests. Almost all the couples married at the Polish Church had their wedding receptions at Polish Hall. There were also dinner dances held at Polish Hall almost every Saturday night. On Memorial Day, we had receptions at Polish Hall after the parades. There were also many fire department banquets, variety shows, men's club breakfasts and other catered events at Polish Hall on a regular basis. The people who are saying that Polish Hall was not regularly and extensively used for catered events unrelated to club activities. From the nineteen fifties on are just wrong, and it would be a terrible shame if Polish Hall was not allowed to rent its building to Elegant Affairs to continue that same use. Thank you. And the last one, Mister Vincent Armushewitz. I am seventy nine years old and live at two oh seven Upper Seven Pond, Upper Seven Ponds Road Watermill. I grew up in Southampton and have lived here my entire life. My grandparents grandparents were founding members of Polish Hall. I was president of the club for nine years in the nineteen seventies. I have firsthand knowledge that catering existed at Polish Hall both prior to and after April thirteen nineteen seventy three. Polish Hall always had wedding parties, anniversaries and funeral receptions. The wedding parties and funeral receptions followed weddings and funerals at Our Lady of Poland Roman Catholic Church. There was no other place in the village to hold these catered events. Even the Sag Harbor and East Hampton Fire Departments held annual banquets and catered events at Polish Hall. All kinds of clubs rented Polish Hall for dinners. For example, there were clubs that raised pigeons. And the POAV parentheses, old vets, those parentheses. All the clubs would eat at Polish Hall when they got together. They were regular and repeating club dinners, meetings and dinner dances. In addition to weddings, anniversary parties and funeral receptions. I support the continued use of Polish Hall by its new tenant for the type of catered events described in this affidavit. These catered events were regular events at Polish Hall for as long as I can remember. And with regard to the compilation. We went back to the compilation to see if the weddings that are mentioned in these letters were in there, and they weren't. Because not every wedding got into that. That's from the local newspapers. And it's it's, I think it's powerful because it shows. Over decades, the kind of the events that were there, but it doesn't accurately reflect their volume. Because it's not intended for that purpose and it 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 and and it's not a log. The log that we have Mister Skrebinski will talk about because that is a log of the Polish. Our Lady of Poland Roman Catholic Church weddings, and that shows a very impressive number of weddings over that thirty year period. At this point, if there are no questions for me now, I would like the board to hear Mister Skrebinski.
Do any board members have any questions, Julia or Luke, Susan?
No, I see Mister Armashevitz is actually, does have his hand up though in the waiting room.
That's up to you, Mister Hamburger, wherever wherever you'd like to go from from this point.
I'd like to go to Mister Serbinski.
I don't see anyone with that name. I see someone who has the initials BS. Would that be him?
I don't know. This whole Zoom meeting has thrown us for a loop. Sorry.
Mister Spence, if you're in the audience, can you raise your hand? I don't, I don't see anyone with. Okay, the only person. Okay. Hands are going up and down. I apologize.
Mister Chairman, I apologize. My. The board members also supposed to speak, and I don't know why they're not here.
Mark Mark Antelethius is here and raised his hand.
He is here. Okay, okay.
The hands are going up and down. That's why I'm I'm hesitant. There's a a Butch Arm, Arm, or I don't know how to pronounce the last name.
Armashevitz.
Yes.
That's a letter I just read.
Okay, so he had his hand up a minute ago.
I would like him to.
Okay, Chair, can I bring him in?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Now I don't see him at all. I don't know if he.
Uh, this is Vincent Skrebinski. Can you hear me?
Yes.
That's why, that's why I brought him in, Julie.
Oh, okay.
Are you have me under Butch Armashevitz?
Okay, but you're Mister Sabinski.
That's correct. I'll wave my hand so you know it's me. Would you like, would you like me to?
We can hear you.
Okay, no, I mean, would you like me to start? Uh, yeah, Mister Hamburger called me the other day and he asked me about my recollections of the Polish Hall. And, you know, my first recollection was my grandparents' fiftieth wedding anniversary, which which was about nineteen fifty six. And I, as a child, I attended it and the reception was in the hall. And then my second reception was about my my cousin Alice. She, her wedding was, I think, on May eleventh nineteen fifty five. In fact. The book, one of the documents that Mister Hamburger was referring to is, I I was interested, you know, when I I went over to the church and. If you can see it, let me show you this, the book, and we can get you, I found out we can get you copies of this. But this will show all the what, all the weddings that took, the dates of all the weddings that took place. It at Our Lady of Poland Church between nineteen fifty and. Nineteen nineteen seventy nine. In fact, it goes back to nineteen eighteen and to nineteen ninety something, if you want. But anyway, the period in question is definitely. Is definitely in the book, in the book, and we can provide you with. A copy. So, you know, the wedding, the Alice's wedding reception, you know, my my grand, my grandparents. My grandparents' fiftieth wedding wedding anniversary. And then, you know, those are my early recollections that I also remember is. My father was born here in South Africa, but we were raised in Brooklyn. We came here all the time. In fact, my father used to say, we're going home for the weekend. And they would frequently. Come out here to Southampton to attend a wedding where, you know, sometimes if somebody's funeral, unfortunately. And, you know, oftentimes those events took place at the Polish Hall. And I remember this back in, you know, back in the fifties. Another thing, another misconception, I think that was. That Mister, and I hope he's, I'm hoping pronouncing his name correctly. Mister Borovino is talking about, you know, it's a social club. I was the president of of the Polish American Political Club when the two most recent leases were signed. I, and they were with David Waxman, which was referred to as. Where's, where are my notes? Hampton. Boy. I'm seventy nine years old and I can't find my notes. Anyway, David Waxman. Anyway, we signed the lease with David Waxman, I I think around the year two thousand. And it was definitely. It was, the purpose of the lease was definitely to use. The big ballroom as a catering hall. That was, that was the purpose. And in fact, one of the first. Events that David Waxman had, and we invited, the whole community was invited to it, was one of the. Emergency volunteer, emergency medical technicians. I was in the hospital and she had some. uh, was in the hospital and she had some kind of a cancer or something like that. Anyway, she needs some money and the first event, uh, after David Waxman took over was this, uh, party to raise money to help, um, to help this member of the community who is helping every, helping everybody else. Um, then, um, uh, David Waxman left the hall and we signed the lease with Tim Burke. And again, the purpose of the lease with Tim Burke was to operate as a catering hall. And, um, one of the things that I remember, by that time I had moved to Southampton because I really liked, obviously I was living here. I've, I've been living here full time since I think, uh, ninety one, but, um, uh, uh, when we, when we, when we signed, signed with Tim Burke, one of the, uh, one of the events that always used to come up. Tim, Tim and I were talking and he said, you know, Vince, we, um, we have, um, Christmas parties all the time. And one of the great things we had was last week we had this Christmas party and you won't believe it. There were five different business establishments represented. And people had such a great time because it was this big room, the big room, as you, uh, many of you may know. And each, uh, each entity had a corner of the room. And the people were socializing with each other and they were saying how great this is that we're all able to get together around, around the holiday season and, you know, wish each other well. So it's, it was definitely used back in the nineteen fifties as, you know, a catering hall, if you will, uh, you know, the fire departments and whatnot. In fact, I, uh, I talked to, uh, a couple of other, uh, I'll refer to them as old timers. I guess I'm one too. Uh, Sophie Sideworts, um, Mary Corte and Christine Marchinsook. And they also said basically the same thing, you know, back in the fifties, we remember weddings, funerals, uh, social events, you know, it was the only place to come. And, you know, uh, and it was, was basically used as a, as a catering hall. And, uh, uh, so, you know, all we're doing, all the, the problem, the reason, the reason it stopped is the building kind of got, it got for a whole bunch of reasons, uh, it's not really a prop. I don't really have to go into them here, but for a whole bunch of reasons, the building got into disrepair and it wasn't managed correctly, blah, blah, blah. But anyway, uh, but that use has, you know, it's been used as a catering hall. It's been used as catering hall consistently. And, uh, and, uh, you know, the, uh, these people, you know, the, uh, Sophie Sideworts, uh, Mary Corte and Christine Marchinsook. You know, they said the same thing, uh, that was said before, you know, the fire departments, uh, all the local, you know, uh, uh, community groups. I, I personally remember like after the Fourth of July parade, after the parade was over, the people that marched in the parade because the parade started near the Polish, in fact, a lot of, a lot of the, uh, uh, floats were kind of put together in the Polish Hall parking lot by the railroad station. They went there. After the parade was over, men, people participated in the parade, parade went down the hall. Uh, first, you know, sandwiches and refreshments and that, uh, that type of thing. Also, after the Memorial Day services in the cemetery, the group from the cemetery went over the, to the hall. Um, uh, for refreshments again. So, you know, the, the fact, you know, the, um, uh, uh, saying that it was, that it was, uh, was not used as a catering, uh, as a catering facility is, is completely false. And if anybody has any questions to me, I'll be glad to answer them.
Mr. Chairman, could I just ask Mr. Skrabinski to confirm that number? Cause he, he, he referenced the weddings and he has the book. And he had told me there were three hundred eighty eight between that.
It was, it was three hundred and eighty eight. If my math, you know, my math may be off by one, but it's, it's three hundred, it's three hundred and eighty eight.
And we'll, we'll arrange with the church to get copies of those pages.
Yeah, we'll, we'll get copies. You just tell us what, what you need and we'll get them, we'll get them made up. We'll get them.
Thank you.
You're quite welcome and thank you for letting, giving me the opportunity to speak.
Great.
Any other question?
Do any board members have any other questions? Mr. Hamburgers, who else would you, um, like to speak to this?
Mr. Antelethius, a member of the Board of the Polish American Club is in the waiting room.
Is it, is that Mark or?
Mark.
Okay. Julie, can, can you?
I believe that he's come in.
Hello?
Yes, we can hear you.
Hi. Oh, excuse me. Hi, uh, my name is Mark Antelethius, a lifelong member of resident of Southampton. And, um, I am a legacy of the Polish Hall. Um, I do, uh, I want to thank, I want to thank this board for their work. It's, uh, is sitting here listening to this all night. It's, uh, it's what a job you have. So, uh, thank you so much for your public service. It is not an easy thing. Uh, I'm going to spare us the trip down memory lane. We've, I think we've heard plenty of that tonight. The only comment I'll make about that is I didn't realize the hundreds of weddings, funerals, concerts, fundraisers, parties and other events I attended at the Polish Hall over the last sixty years were all considered incidental events. But that's neither here nor there. Um, I, I do, I do want to, uh, mention something, uh, also a word that came up a lot is social club. And I think, uh, I think Richard hit on it pretty well when he said that, you know, the, yes, there were weddings, yes, they were, some of them were belonged to members, uh, and, and whatnot. Some of the parties were run by members. But at the end of the day, that is, if anyone hasn't ridden by there, it's a big building. And it needs, it needs a lot of work. It needs money. It needs something to keep it going. And how do you do that? With a commercial operation. That's simple as that. Um, I, I really, like I said, I don't want to, I know we've been on this for a long time, so I really don't want to go too much farther. I, I do want to though, leave, leave with this. At, at the planning board meeting, uh, someone from the opposition made the comment, well, you know what? It could be a bank. So I asked this directly to the community of Southampton. We now have two banks that are now unused. Do we want a third bank unused? Or do we want a facility where the, where the everyman guy can go and have their wedding? I don't have a five acre backyard. I don't have the ability to have a tent for two hundred people in my backyard. I don't have a private tennis club where I can go and I can have a, an event. People need to be able to have these events that celebrate life. That's what that building was and has been for eighty eight years, a building that has celebrated the life in this community. When you choose to live next to it, that is the consequences of living next to that building. And I hope that this board takes into context the historical content of that building. That what it means to this community, what it has meant to this community. And furthermore, what we as the board of, of the Polish Hall, we are committed, committed to being good neighbors. I, I will be the first to admit that the Polish Hall fell, um, fell into, uh, some tough times. And maybe it lost its way a bit. But we have a young board, well, I'm sixty two. I don't know if that's young, but we have a board that consists of, of men who, who, um, who are all, uh, legacies of this building, who take tremendous pride in this neighborhood and what this building represented to us. And we take this very seriously and we hope this community still treasures what the Polish Hall has meant to this community. And I want to thank everyone for their time tonight. It's been a long night. Thank you.
No, thank you, Mark.
Mr. Chairman, is John Kusshusko in the waiting room?
Yes. One moment, let me just bring out Mr. Antelethius.
I'd ask that he speak.
Yes. He's being promoted to panelist now. Mr. Kos, Koskiusko, you turn on your camera and unmute. Perfect.
Uh, yes, John Kusshusko, um, I am a board member of the Polish Hall. I lived in the Southampton Village for fifty three years. Uh, my dad ran the Polish Hall. Back in fifties and sixties, seventies, eighties and nineties. Um, I, I don't want to bore you with all the useless information, but a lot of my other board member Mark and my attorney Richard, you know, they did a wonderful job speaking. Uh, it's always been a catering operation since day one, open to the public. It's from bowling downstairs, the bowling leagues were open to the public seven days a week. I actually worked in the bowling alley back in the day. Every single event, uh, I was, I've been a shareholder all my life. Going back to when Vince signed the lease for the David Waxman of Hampton Hall. I was in, in the annual shareholders meeting at that time. And we were moving the hall in the, the right direction, getting another operation in there because, you know, the Polish people uh, are slowly leaving the area. Uh, we are the last few people that are left to keep the legacy going. And part of, part of it is, is now I, I want to keep it going for my kids and my grandkids. We built the church, we built the school and we built the Polish Hall. I mean, that's our Polish community right there. Like Vince said, and, and other members in the affidavits, how had their weddings at the Polish Church, walked to the Polish Hall and they would have their reception there. My parents, uh, they got married in Polish Church, but they went to the Elks Club because it was another wedding, probably at the Polish Hall at that time. But as we move forward, we, we had a huge venting process to get the current tenant in there. There was a lot of other applicants that we could easily have in there. But we chose the correct one that's, that we felt was going to be the right fit for the premise and the neighborhood and the community. Because it is a community place and we wanted to continue to be a community place. Um, and that's pretty much all I have to say. And thank you for your time.
Thanks, John.
Hey, Matt.
Luke. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, can I make some concluding remarks?
Yes, go ahead.
In summary, there's no jurisdiction and the application is untimely. It's our view that there's really is a small number of residents who oppose this. There's not an outpouring of opponents like there's been against the social club, the Southampton Social Club and the T Bar Restaurant next door because of the misbehavior of its patrons in the summers, which is a local problem, um, that lasts till four AM in the morning. Consistently over time, generation after generation, the public nature of Polish Hall as a commercial venue for club members, other members of the Polish community in Southampton and unrelated clubs, fire departments, organizations and other persons not affiliated at all with Polish Hall to hold dinners, parties and special events where food was served with frequency and regularity has been established. As Mr. Kusshusko said, they searched and interviewed many tenants after this unfortunate period where they had the DJ in. Um, they found a professional operation that is not a restaurant, it's not a tavern, it's not a nightclub. It doesn't go into the early morning hours. Elegant Affairs has also already spent several hundred thousand dollars to refresh a building that badly, badly needed it. And it would be a great improvement to the neighborhood when you measure it against what immediately came before it or measure it in the abstract as a place to hold functions and benefit the entire community. I think I lost my way when I was talking before about Andrea Corialy. At the Nassau County Museum of Art, there are restrictions. Parties have to stop at eleven o'clock. There can't be any amplified music outside. Those were in the contracts and Andrea and her organization were always very good at honoring those rules and running a professional operation in a residential neighborhood, which is what Roslyn Harbor is. Um, for many years and did a really very good job and had their relationship renewed year after year with the museum board. Um, this is a class professional act that's coming to the village of Southampton. Thank you very much for the opportunity to be heard on behalf of the applicant tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Hamburg. Julie, can you let, um, Mr. Hamburger exit?
Yes.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Good night.
Can we, uh, have TN speak to this, the chief building inspector? Julie, can you, can you let TN in?
Yes, I can. And also, uh, Mr. Borovina has his hand up as well.
We'll, we'll let Mr. Borovina finish, but I'd, I'd like to hear from, uh, from TN if we could.
Yeah, TN is, is in.
Hello?
How are you? And thanks for being available. Um, can you speak to the board about issuing the, the building permit and, and what your process, um, may have been at the time?
Uh, it, it's an interior alteration permit. Uh, and it's really, it's already been stated, it's a renovation of an existing building. Um, you know, in terms of just the building apartment itself, we, we were just concerned, we're just trying to bring it up to uh, to code as much as possible. And it's as simple as that. It, it really had no bearing with respect to the use itself. It's just renovations to the interior of the building itself. That's, that's really what it amounted to. Uh, from what I understand, there were going to be later stages, you know, exterior alterations, perhaps renovations to the parking lot. But, uh, that's, that's, that hasn't arrived yet. So that's where we are.
So did you consider whether or not it could be a violation of the existing certificate of occupancy? Or did you consider it and see that there was no possible violation?
Uh, I, I see that there's really no violation of the, uh, existing CFO that was on file with respect to a catering use.
Do any board members have any, any questions for TN? Julia or Susan? Julie, you there?
Where?
I'm here.
Here.
I'm here.
Okay. Great. Thank you so much, uh, TN. Really appreciate it.
You're welcome.
So, um, Julie, if, if Mr. Borovina wants to, wants to wrap up and, uh, go ahead, let him in.
Okay. Mr. Borovina, you're in as a panelist.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, that'll be, thank you very much for this opportunity. Very quick with this. Um, I'm just going to respond to the points that were raised, uh, when it's, when it's said that we do not challenge the alterations themselves. Well, as I said, the alterations themselves are benign. The code, however, talks about the issuance of building permits in the context of their intended use. And there is a, in this case, Elegant Affairs is known throughout the state of New York as having only the commercial catering use. And that's why it intends to do it. And indeed has a long-term lease. It entered into us as indicated by the letter, share, letter to the shareholders in twenty twenty, a long-term lease for a catering use. That has never been allowed in the past. Uh, uh, what has been used is the social club, the Polish American Club being in charge of the as the primary use, social club, and you had incidental uses. And there's no question that there were incidental uses. As, uh, uh, with including, by the way, honoring fire departments, veterans, uh, birthdays, et cetera. But it did not, uh, all of a sudden convert an incidental use into a principal use, let alone a commercial use. Um, the, the, uh, what the argument that we could have challenged the issues of the building permit in March, uh, when, when it was issued between March and October. Well, no, uh, and the village attorney can, can himself verify this. At the time the application was made, the code actually said, no building permit can be issued unless it's been approved by the building, uh, by, by the planning board. In response to that, TN gave a stop work order. The applicant Elegant Affairs applied to the, to the building department, to the planning board. We waited to see what happened. And in the interim, by the way, the board of trustees, recognizing that they should, that there's a building, um, the planning board really should not get involved in something like this, rescinded the local law. At that point, the building permit now became truly final, like in other jurisdictions, like in East Hampton and other places when building permits are issued in that regard, but the village of Southampton had it, had a quirk, which was ultimately rescinded. Uh, what about, what, what about the, um, uh, the argument, well, prior to the code, there was no distinction between uses. The argument, well, prior to the code, there was no distinction between uses. Well, I guess that's true, but bear in mind, the primary use at that time, prior to nineteen seventy-three, was as a, was as a social club. There was never an opportunity where a use as a principal use came into being as a catering facility. Only as, only as an incidental use, the Polish American Committee was not in the business. Of conducting a commercial operation as they were paying, as their guests, as you and I, if we came in as wedding guests. We may have been paying a fee to subsidize their cost, I'm sure that may have happened by the way. But nevertheless, it did not convert Polish Hall into a commercial use. What about the argument, well, gee, about three hundred and sixty-five days a year that was taken out of context? Well, the Elegant Affairs, by the way, is not taken out of context. It may be a good organization in and of itself, but the fact of the matter is it's in the business of being a commercial operation as a catering use. And that's where the, that's where the problem is. The argument is that there's now the intended. That only a small number, I'm sorry, only a small number of residences, residents, residents of Elm Street. Well, we have three applicants who are part of this, actually four, part of the application. There are many neighbors who do object to this, let me just raise this point finally, about what TN said. He said, by the way, when I issued the building permit, I really had nothing in mind, I was just looking at the interior renovations, I'm sure he's right about that, okay. He issued it in good faith, he wasn't, he wasn't trying to, you know, subvert anything. And he never thought about it in terms of the bearing as to its use. But the intended use, there is no ifs, ands or buts about it, the intended use is as a commercial use. And in that regard, this board has jurisdiction just to, to say that if the building permit was issued for an intended use, which is not allowed by the code. It is to be rescinded. If Polish Amer, if the Polish Hall wants to re, make another application in the context of a social club use. Because they now want to refurbish their catering, they, they want to redo their kitchen. Or, or, and they need a building permit for that, well, that's a different subject and we'll address it when that happens. It may very well be lawful at that time for all I know. But, but that's not what was before TN, when the application by Elegant Affairs was being, was, 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 was being made. Again, I thank this board for its patience in listening to both sides of the argument. And I trust that you will take under advisement the arguments that are raised and make a proper determination. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, perhaps while Mr. Borvino is still on the screen, you had mentioned earlier the board's intention to continue the matter. I assume Mr. Borvino has no objection to that, can you just confirm that? You're still here?
No, I'm sorry, let me bring him back in, I apologize for that.
And we've heard from both sides, do we still want to leave it open? Yeah, this, well, there's, there's a lot of paperwork. To. That they came in as memoranda, so I, yes, look, in reading that, other questions may arise.
Mr. Borvino is back in, counsel.
Thanks. Mr. Borvino, I just, can you hear me? This is Jeff. I assume you have no objection to the matter being continued and left open based upon the chairman's statement at the, at the beginning.
I do not, I do not, I want the board to carefully consider this, I do request that it's going to reconsider, I, to hold it, I will not be. I'll be out of the state until June twentieth, so if anything is going to be done, I ask that it be done. When I say be done, in terms of making submissions, responses or appearances be done every little time.
Mr. Chairman, I believe there is a board meeting June twenty-third.
And every case has been held over till that date.
Does that work for you, Mr. Borvino, will adjourn for all purposes and will, will adjourn until June twenty-third?
Yes, it does, but the proviso that if they're, look, I don't know what the submissions are going to be, if I have to respond, I would like to respond, it all depends on the. The, the volume of the response that I may have to do.
Sir, the board asks that documents that are coming in for a Thursday meeting be submitted the Tuesday ahead and for a Tuesday meeting, the Thursday ahead.
Is that, was that directed to me?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I didn't understand your point.
What the board asks is that if there's a meeting being held on a Tuesday, then any submissions be submitted on the preceding Thursday? If a meeting is being held on a Thursday, then any submissions be submitted no later than noon on the Tuesday proceeding?
I would just say though, I understand that, but if I'm getting papers, I will not have the opportunity to meet that kind of a deadline because I will be out of the state. I'll be here in person, but the question is, will I be able to turn it around, set of papers, to the extent one is needed. To respond to papers that are being submitted. By the owner.
So Jeff, we, he, Mr. Borvino could make that point at the June twenty-third public hearing and we could keep it open if.
That's, I, I, that's good, I will be available on the twenty-third and, and if I have nothing, no objections, or I'm sorry, no reply, I'll say that. And as far as I'm concerned, the record will be closed.
Okay, thank you. Julie, can you let Mr. Borvino exit?
Yeah, I just did.
So I'll motion that we. Adjourn case number three one three eight, two thirty Elm Street. For all purposes until June twenty-third, can I have a second?
Second.
And all in favor of adjourning two thirty Elm Street until? Twenty-third. So I, I think we're, we're done unless anybody has something they want to bring up, I'm going to motion to close the public hearing. For May twenty-six, two oh two-two of the zoning board of appeals, can I have a second?
Second.
Second.
And all in favor?
I.